I passed out a map, so that should help you a little bit. In fact, I'll get them up so I know what colors I'm talking about. We go. I'll start with the Many Hands, which is the yellow parcel on the map. Many Hands is a nonprofit, fairly new nonprofit that is proposing to build and operate. Campus for developmentally disabled adults. They call it a service residential service campus. They have a grant from a Michigan Family Foundation. For the amount of the purchase price of the eighty seven acres. The string that's attached to that is that they need to raise an equal amount. They have raised much of that amount, but they are not finished yet. And they're looking at a deadline at the end of March next year to have raised that money. Additionally, they've been working on other things. And have submitted a PUD site plan to the Scioto Township Planning Commission. It will be in front of the planning commission in November, starting that approval process. Many Hands intention is to close with my entity in the second quarter of two thousand and twenty five. That's that is their aspiration. The green parcel, the oddly shaped green parcel. Is a proposed sale of approximately one hundred and ten acres to the Scioto Land Conservation Program. We have been in contact with them over a period of years, really. But we have an application in for this amount of land. It includes the twenty one acre parcel on the west side of Baker Road. A small parcel that would unify two existing pieces of what's called the Sloan Preserve. This land was not purchased by Scioto Township when they purchased the rest of it. From a different owner than than me. Because of the, well, let me back up. So the ninety acres on the east side in Green. It is wrapping around the Many Hands project, as you can see. And it does include virtually all of the mature woods. Which is probably the driver of why they want to obtain the property from us. We in Scioto have been aware. For fifteen years plus of elevated arsenic levels in four acres. Of the twenty one on the west side of the road. And of course, the western boundary of that property, this quickly line is Mill Creek. So they would hope to get this twenty one acres. With arsenic abatement completed and unified the Sloan Preserve. So then the use would be like recreational activity on trails. Relative to the arsenic, we have completed a new soil sampling. All of the, and we're doing that through an environmental engineer, A K T Peer List. And those samples are now at the lab. Our intention in November at the Scioto Parks Commission meeting is to present our mitigation plan for the arsenic contamination. My expectation, assuming that our plan gets accepted. Is that Scioto will probably be ordering an appraisal of the hundred of the entire hundred and ten acres. Probably in the first quarter of next year. That appraisal will set the purchase price and then we would begin to move toward or to sale with them. Which brings me to the orange or brownish parcel on the map. That's the proposed forty five acre annexation. Our goal is to do residential development on that part. We've submitted multiple conceptual plans. I would say that our goal would be for the highest density of those approximately one hundred and thirteen residential units. Of market rate housing. Michelle, I've been calling it attainable housing as we are planning to bring the product to the market that will be. Well below average sale prices in the Dexter area. But Michelle. Put me in the term of art with Mishna, they have a program for attainable housing. So I'm calling it today market rate housing. Our intention based on the pricing we got last December, January. Is to deliver product between three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars per unit. You may recall, I told you in December that the average sale price in two thousand and twenty three. Weeks shy of the end of the year for the Dexter School was five hundred and fifty seven thousand. So this would be a more affordable product for the marketplace. I'll tell you as a retired real estate broker, there is a desperate need for more housing in this price range. Our work on the the annexation parcel, since we've spoken, has mostly related to. The exploration for a new municipal well. In the spring, we got Eagle's approval of a. Exploration plan in two phases. This summer, we completed the phase one work and water testing. And all that is now done with fairly encouraging results. We are scheduled for phase two of the Eagle Plan. In the month of December, we're using Cribley locally and we're on their calendar for December. Phase two. With that, I'd like to bring Mark Swetman, our water engineer up and he can give you a little more detail on the well progress.
Sounds good. Just jump in, counsel, if you have a question or want to ask a different direction or something. I just said to counsel, if they have a question or something, raise your hand or just jump in, you know.
Sure. And the first thing I'll bring, David, I'm not an engineer. Never will be, never want to be. I'm a job. Yeah, so again, Mark Swetman, and like David said, I've been working on. Kind of perfecting a water supply for the development. You know, we completed the first phase work and I always take these stepwise for each step building so we can try to get to the successful conclusion. If we find something along the way that isn't good, there's just there even a stop. We haven't seen that at all here so far. I don't anticipate it. The first boring we did was at the location of where the test well will be, which would eventually become a production well. Like the soil sample sediment precipice, so we can design the screen and well around that information. Typically, you'll see wells, fashion section. Sometimes you'll see wells get drilled where a drill come up is drill well and it's a well, I've got the screen in my truck, I wouldn't use that. Designed nature. Look at what the offer is like. And then size, the well and the scheme accordingly. All right, and we've been working with your consultant also. In our work plans and it's been a few modifications to what we had planned on. Initially, we were going to give a PVC well, which we do without communities. Dexter is ready to have. Thing about a steel well with stainless steel screen. We've got new numbers from family and that's what we're doing. And then one of the things that came out of the first phase when we did the short term office test, give us an idea of. The characteristics of the hot. And that's it. Just the first brush room we fixed later on. I don't know any modifications that we've been about to do. And so Dan looked at the data as we suggested we instead of doing. A normal one day pumping test on the well events is put in. That we do a pre date test. So seventy two hours of pumping. And the other, when we started this, my first question to David and into the city was, how much water? What is our goal? And the number that we had in our earlier meeting was maybe three hundred and fifteen, ten fifteen gallons a minute. Round and out, we're there. Small well that we put in our first test well. It was about a seven inch diameter well and that pumped three hundred and fifteen gallons a minute like it was no problem.
Yes. How long?
That one was eight hours.
Eight hours?
We only got three hours of grata, three feet of grata in the well.
What size was the casing pipe that that you were pumping the water through?
Six nine nine.
And then the?
Screen was a six.
Six and then the?
Three feet.
And then you were using plastic PVC?
Yeah.
And how big was the PVC?
Six nine nine.
Six nine nine, okay.
Right, it was gravel packed also and then developed. Again, when we go to the, we'll call it the production block to make it easier versus test and production. That will be a field well with stainless steel screen on. We've worked through the civil analysis that we got from the driller, the design screen for it. And stream opening is actually much larger than we had in that first test. And that's information that we've shared with your consultant.
All right, my, I'm just gonna give this a little bit more.
Okay, absolutely.
The 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 mic could get cast a pop off.
Yeah, and that's that's one of the things about one of the bad things about being tall.
And what is the location, the location that's on like each sixteen of the works?
No, it's not.
Okay.
So the location of, if you look on the map, the Brown parcel.
Yes.
It's up in the northeast corner of that parcel. And then when we cited the well, great question. You have to look at not only the site, but what's on the site and certain requirements for your business. Property lines, potential sources of contamination. And the thing that we did originally, we're going to keep it a little bit further away from that northeast corner. But then we found out along to south of us, there's a gas main. It's a natural gas main, so it's not liquid gas, but natural gas. And the rules say be three hundred feet away from that. It's much easier to get. An isolation distance reduction from property boundaries than it is from a potential source of contamination. So the site that we're looking at is going to be a hundred feet from the adjacent property. Well spake and that's what we did the pilot for.
Okay, I mean, can we get just a map that has a dot on it shows where exactly, just so we get an idea?
Absolutely. I think we've supplied that already and some of the hydrogeologic work at least. The Dan and other people I've seen. But again, actually, if you take that northeast corner and it's just.
So essentially, it's as far into the northeast corner as you can go by still maintaining your. Keepouts or whatever around this. So does that mean that the, I mean, maybe this is a question for Tom or Mr. Love. Does that mean that those homes that are along the northeast corner, the lots that are there?
Yeah, I think there'll be.
I'm skipping ahead, so.
So I think that's something you can ask. But yeah, that's something obviously would have to be done because you've got to maintain those isolation distances there also.
Understood, yep.
But again, everything that we're seeing so far. It is very promising and and I as a job, I would not have told David, let's go to phase two or mobilization two if I call it. Unless I had some level of confidence that we're going to meet what his goals were. Now, the other thing that we're doing, and again, this was a suggestion from Dan Whalen. Right now with that one well we have out there, I know we can do three hundred and fifteen gallons in a heartbeat, not a problem. But Dan also would like us to go and pump it harder, pump it at a higher rate than what we. Would would need for the dwell. And that's in our plan, our revised plans also is to pump it up at about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred gallons a minute. And the screen's been designed around that too. When you're designing a well screen, you have to take into account a lot of factors and one of them is what that pumping rate is going to be. And how fast the water is going to be coming into the screen. So we've taken all that into account.
Dan, I.
And that's a.
Question here, Frank?
Absolutely.
How do you know? What's going on with Aquifer without drilling more than one well?
Well, we've got already, we've got two other wells out there. So when we're doing the Aquifer test. We'll look at not only what's going on with the pumping well.
Right.
But then also what's happening with the observation.
For the drawdowns on the other one?
Get the drawdown of those. So we'll be recording those. And and this thing has kind of a standard game plan and we're going beyond it, which is fine. And we're going to pump it for a much longer period of time. Which frankly, I was getting ready to break that news to David that I want to do that anyways.
Right.
We're going to be pumping it a longer amount of time and typically, once you shut the pump off. You look at the recovery for a period of time, it's about equal to what the pumping time is. We're going to be extending that also. And those are things that your consultant had asked for us to do.
Right.
And so it's it's just data, so it's not a head thing to expect.
I I don't know if this is a question for you, but what's the derivation of the three hundred and fifteen gallons per minute?
You'll have to ask Michelle because that's what we were told.
Okay. Okay, I'll I'll hold the question then.
Thank you.
Oh, you want to follow up on it? Good.
Well, I guess what? It's possible. That there's more water there than three hundred and fifty. I mean, if they get two other wells and they put the proper sized casing in. Yep. When they go through with this study, it's possible that there's more water there.
And that's more and that's what we're looking at. And the well in size, not for three hundred and fifteen gallons a minute. It's sized around in that seven hundred fifty to a thousand gallon a minute range.
Right.
And it's a it's a good producer and a lot of water there. It is. From everything we've seen so far, a very prolific.
Did you get any results back on the on the arsenic levels that you're getting right now?
It was interesting. So during right at the conclusion of the off test, the pumping test. The arsenic level was at about thirteen parts per billion and that's very similar, I guess, to what I'm hearing is what what that could have.
We get it. Most times.
And and along with that, it's got some iron. So the iron and. You take the iron out, the arsenic comes with it. And but the interesting thing, and this is something I've taken into account in the design. We got that first result back. I went back out, instead of pumping it at that high pumping rate, we have a small submersible pump. And in the data tables, you'll see another result where the result was like at four parts per billion if we pump out at a lower rate. So it's a fairly small particulate material that's coming in and getting through the analysis and that's where the arsenic is associated. So. I'm toying a bit with the well design to maybe cut that down. No guarantees, but it's worth a try.
This could be a dumb question, but can you go deeper to get away from the arsenal?
From what? And speaking with local drillers, deeper isn't better.
Okay.
When the whole arsenic rule came out and there was a lot of concern on the residential side. Frankly, some of the residential wells will be included in shallower.
Okay.
And so our aquifer, I think, ended at like a hundred and fifty five feet. Hundred and fifty four feet, something like that. And so I'm actually going to try to bring the screen up a little bit. Maybe ten feet, five feet. And deeper won't work here. So we went as deep as we could and we hit. Non prolific material.
Okay.
So a shale hole.
Thank you.
Great questions, Dan. They're not dumb questions. Thank you.
Dan, online, do you have anything to add after, based upon Mark's comments from the city's perspective and what you've been doing to help us?
Um, hopefully you can hear me. I tested your thing. Okay, good. Um. About the only thing I have to say, Mark, is in the comments that we were going back and forth in the emails. I think this is sort of a, this is a clear water table situation and that pumping duration has to be three days. And the recovery has to be three days minimum.
We're going to do that.
So. And I know you've said you're going to extend the pumping rate and extend the recovery, but you didn't really say it was going to be upwards or past seventy two hours. I just. Think that's important.
Right, the pumping is going to be seventy two. And again, Dan, that's the, as you know, very typical thing that our friends of the state ask us to do. Setting the recovery period at the. When when I'm running a job, I have electronic reporters that are going to wow, but I also like to take things manually also. So we're going to have, we're going to collect manual and electronic data through that full seventy two hours. And then we will also be collecting data. I'll pass that and and Dan, something I could talk with you. How long you think we may need to extend because I don't know if it's going to be another day, another week. But the data loggers are in the house. It's just, it's more data. That's all it is. I don't have a problem extending that recovery period.
Okay, yep. The only reason is because this area is notorious for having these little aquifers that really don't extend very far. And the only way you're going to tell. Is if you really base load. When you pump, you have to base load this thing hard, pump it hard for a long time and let it recover a long time. That's that's the of my comments.
And again, for your comment on the baseball. And we were seeking looks around about three hundred gallons a minute. We're going to be pumping this thing up at about seven hundred and fifty to maybe eight hundred or a thousand gallons a minute.
I think that's important. Because you won't, you won't see this if you're only pumping at three hundred GPM. This this could get away from you and you you might never know. So.
Well, that's what we're going to do. That that's the higher rate.
Yep. Are you still planning to use plastic for a PVC casing? I think myself and the cities. Not.
Oh, excuse me. I said I was using steel casing.
I'm sorry, I missed your. I can hear you now. I wasn't able to hear you so quick earlier.
Yeah, and so we actually had Cribley, who then gave us new pricing for doing the steel casing.
Okay.
And then also extending the Aqua Test time.
Okay. I still was kind of making a comment about plumness and alignment. I think that's really important.
That's in there.
Okay, good. Good. Excellent.
And. Just anything, just anything from you or Tim that we should know, your thoughts on the process?
I I think Michelle had her had her hand up.
Okay. Michelle?
Hi, Sean. Hi, counsel. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Dan. I I do appreciate that, excuse me, that the the comments regarding that Dan and Tim. Have made regarding the steel casing and the duration of the pumping time have been. Agreed to that. That's really important. One of the things that I recall in both Dan and Tim. Even Dan Schloss would be able to correct me if I misstate this. When we did well five. There's a, there's a potential that if we had done the longer testing or the longer pumping, as Dan Whalen has explained. We might have been able to identify that it wasn't going to be the producer, that the smaller pumping. First informed us. So the object is for for this. To be able to demonstrate. That this well could be, or this location could be a municipal well and not that we would have the same problem that we had with number five. It would be a win win for both the developer as well as the city. And that's what we're all working toward. And that's basically my comment for you. If there's any other questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thanks, Michelle. Tim, any thoughts or your observation?
She's on this before me, Dan. You know. Contestants are so convenient because they were, my understanding was. They had that well drilled and they were told it was basically a five hundred gallon well, which both did. And then we started to cultivate that for some days, we figured let's use that and get the deep ones used out of it. So once they did that, they dial it down to three hundred gallons a minute, then we keep it that. A good level where it's not having issues. I think that's where that three hundred a minute came from. When you say, I guess what I'm asking too is you could steal well casing steel, that's what we're talking about. Now, your drop pipe. I don't have any problems with PVC or PVC server line. That does not matter. It's all our wells. We switch it over to because the process is the water. So. Keep that in mind when you drill bigger walls. Do that. That's what we basically.
Yeah, that's all I've been getting the well in. So the the things for the design, the pump and the piping and all that, that's other things will happen to be discussed.
Yeah, and and another thing is too, I guess, wanting to get the well in. So even if we get this well in and do all this stuff, you still have an arsenic issue. You need to figure out how to work it. You know, right now we're doing, well, five is not an arsenic issue, so we can go waste of the system. So I mean, I don't, where I'm looking, this is the first time I've seen where it's adjacent to the housing. So it's put in the middle there. I mean, if we have to put some other filtrations, maybe better.
And again, it's up in that upper right hand corner.
So all of the maps we have, I think, are the ones prepared by Tom Covert's firm. Is that right?
The location of this in in our work plan and in hydrogeal study that we've submitted has the location in it. And so Tom and I just got to converse better and get, you know, on his plans.
Okay.
Sean, it's on the screen right now, the the location that Joe had been asking about. I was able to pull up Mr. Swetman's scope of work. So the map's on the screen.
Well, it's the green triangle up in that right hand corner.
And what are A and C in the red dots, just for curious, just to complete the map?
Yeah, the the red dots are. Two of the observation wells. And then there's another actually observation well that existed at the site when we came out. And that is the one that's the purple. Triangle.
Those were existing wells that were there on the property?
The one that's called C on that map, so that purple triangle.
Yeah.
That was a five inch test well that got put in by the prior developer when they were looking for water.
Okay.
And so we actually pumped that one. It did a hundred gallons in it and we were, the original story on that was that it went dry and there's no way it went dry. What they did is they did their test with, they moved it around the well. And then tried to record the water levels that way and, you know. When it was ninety five gallons and then had maybe a foot or two of grata then when we did our first test. Well, that's an existing five inch well and those observation wells get abandoned once the project's done.
Thank you.
Sure.
If you, if you could share that map when you get a chance. With everybody. I'd appreciate it.
Should have introduced both of you all.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you. As your packet that you have before, you have a couple of concept plans that were developed for the project ahead of the well testing happening. We have revised those concept plans to include the wells where Mark had indicated that were shown on the plan. And if you can imagine, basically the isolation distance on the concept plans you have. Moving over to that northwest corner and then lots or buildings that are in concept plan moving where that isolation distance is. It's. It's a pretty easy spot. Those plans were used for what Mark is doing with his well study and water study. And have since been incorporated into our concepts, which we can share with everybody then. But it's it didn't affect unit count or building counts or anything.
Gotcha. Okay, questions for on the well? So if December is when you're going to drill with Cribley. When do you expect to have more information to share with us?
David would like it next day because that's not going to happen. I would say by the end of the first, at the latest.
Okay.
But we'll have information early on. You'll have, your water quality will come in and the data that we get will, of course, be worked with Dan on sharing that information.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your work and your presentation.
It's fun.
Okay. Do we want to jump to the information in the work packet? Anybody or anybody have questions generally based on what they've heard? Nobody's got a question?
Not any.
Well, maybe we can bring O H M up on the stand. No. Um. Go ahead, Dave.
Mark is playing the lead with something he has for the well.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
We look forward to the future update. Thanks for coming.
Well.
Maybe I should be asking Marie, Marie, do you wanna go over the revenue projections that you made and tell us a little bit about what you did? I know the memo talks about a lot of assumptions and that. You know, this is just a, what do you call it, a guesstimation, I think that word was used twice. That's okay, that's okay, I think that's reasonable at this point in time.
And now we have to go down to the short person.
Okay.
The microphone. Yeah, so the developers, um, sent me some information about, um, the kind of parcels or properties that they were looking to compare to. Uh, which was Dexter Crossings in the newer phases. And the, for the, for the single family home concept. And, um, condos like Eaton Court or your own, um. Not farms, um.
Here on view court.
Thank you, here on view, I always get those mixed up in my head. Um, here on view courts as kind of the baseline to work off of, so. What I did basically is I just got the twenty twenty-three true cash or twenty twenty-four true cash values of those parcels. And broke them out into an average price per square foot. Um, the developer told me kind of roughly the square footers they were looking for. Which I don't have on my spreadsheet here, I thought I could drill down, but anyway, oh, I'm sorry, sixteen hundred square foot-ish range. Um, and I just kind of extrapolated that out based on what our current mileage rates are. And what the values of these houses are, although I will tell you, um, these houses and the information that I gave you on the revenue side aren't attainable houses. Housing. They're not three hundred and fifty thousand, um, I did some quick calculations. While the gentleman with the well was speaking. And the average eighteen hundred square foot one story is four hundred thousand in Dexter crossings. And the average two thousand square foot two story is five hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the average fourteen hundred square foot condo is four hundred and five. So if you're looking at roughly a four hundred, four hundred and twenty-five-ish range, that's about twelve percent less than what is in your packet. But that's kind of the methodology I use, so it's pretty simple. Um, but the reason I keep saying that this is. You know, I mean, markets change. Um, they've gone up so much in the last, you know, five years, they could go down. You know, that's not, I can't get, I can't make any guarantees that it's going to give this revenue. I guess was the whole point.
Well, you, you've got a range here, just for those listening, if I read a range of anywhere from. A hundred and seventy thousand up to two seventy in operating verse, and along with that. Streets ranges from, looks like around seventy thousand up to maybe a little over a hundred.
Right, and it just depends on what style house. Or condo.
Yeah, yeah.
And then finishes and.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and that, and that's getting, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes into like, you know, especially some of the newer houses in Dexter crossings. Um, they may have marble countertops, you know, this development may be proposing for my stuff or whatever that is now, you know, countertops. Um, they might have solid wood floors. And this development might be laminate, and those type of finishings in the, in the buildings make a big difference. So you could say, you know, yeah, the, the average in Dexter Crossing is four hundred thousand, but that's what this, this, this and that. And if this development has these other things, they might get down to that price range, but if they get down to that price range, then obviously our revenue is going to be lower.
Good. And then, um, the other funds, um. I looked at, uh, the estimated usage eh, for water and sewer from our, um. Water and sewer rate studies that, that were conducted by, um, Baker Tilly. Um, applied those, um, I applied our, uh, ready to serve, current ready to serve charges, ba- based on number of units. Um, our refuse collection fee based on number of units. Um, and an estimate on, you know, if we have, I think I estimated a mile of road. Um. The corresponding amount of like Act fifty-one, so I, we, we, I tried to, in addition to what Marie provided, um, give a flavor of. Um, the other revenues and what, what, what those could, could potentially look like.
And, and to go towards that too with the, the type of housing and the, it depends on the type of. Um. Residents are being attracted by that type of housing, so if you've got a family of four or five. You might have higher usage in your water than if it's, you know, targeted towards seniors. You only have two.
And, and if you have a second meter, uh, with irrigation. That.
Right.
Also impacts things as well.
And also that goes towards your road usage and that sort of thing, I mean, if you've got more school buses going down or you've got more people going down. It's all very.
Yeah, well, that's what we asked for. Anybody have any questions on the revenue side of? Things, they, they left anything out, they didn't see? And remind, remind me, how much do we collect in tax revenue through the general fund right now? For the rest of existing village? Is it like three million?
Sounds about right.
Two point, yeah, two point, two point seven, eight, two point nine.
Okay, so I'm close.
Uh, yeah, budget is two point nine four zero.
Okay, three billion, right, that's all, okay. And, and streets is what?
Now you're asking me the hard question.
Yeah, well.
Streets is one point two.
Okay.
And that's including personal property, that's your own person.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, who do we want to talk to about the cost side of things?
Well, I, I know, um, from OHM, Marcus did a lot of the, the work in the OHM report, and unfortunately, it sounds like he's, he's not feeling well this evening.
Okay.
Um, but Patrick is here, um, I don't know, I'm. I'm assuming Marcus filled Patrick in on, on, on the report, so.
Pa- Patrick's usually got an answer. How are you?
How are you guys?
Good, good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Sure. Um, so, you know, within, within the packet, um, it's an effort to really kind of explain what a, um, a long-term. Um. You know, burden would be for the community if this infrastructure did come online, I think we also recognize it is, um. There is a substantial investment that we made. Um, you know, we talked about water, um, the cost of plants. Um, it's significant, so if this is a project that can deliver that. Um, that capital cost, whatever that ends up being, um, is significant and, and does provide, you know, potential. Um, opportunities for the city by providing additional water capacity. Um. But then we also look at the obvious, there's the maintenance responsibilities that come with, um, you know, the new areas of the city. Um, and so what's provided is basically that kind of comparison of what that initial cost estimate is, but then more of a. Um, looking at kind of life cycle costs for that, and we're looking over like a hundred year timeframe. Um, typically, infrastructure that goes in the ground really should, um, be able to last that hundred years and. Water main projects we're doing today, sewer projects. Expected life cycle of those pipes is usually about a hundred years, sometimes the valves and hydrants. Those are going to require more frequent maintenance and replacement just because those are working parts. Uh, they're designed to be replaced a little easier, the mains themselves, so it should be. Um, able to sustain that, that period of time. Um. But we also know that with those, uh, elements of the system, there is the annual maintenance, uh, the hydrants and valves do need some repair. Um, so we did kind of look at cost over a hundred years and then, uh, gave it a divided, uh, value of that. Uh, about, we thought of somewhere forty-five thousand, fifty thousand per year additional responsibility to maintain that system. Um, and then that annualized cost for the replacement, because the thought is after that hundred years, you would have to go and replace it. Um, it's a hundred forty-six thousand, that's in today's dollars, so you would. Probably want to look at that, um, with some, you know, inflation factor to it, you know, it's. Could be quite a bit more, um, if we're looking a hundred years out.
Do you add those two numbers together?
Um, yeah, I think if you want to look at it from the annual perspective, you would add them and then apply the inflation factor.
So just to make sure I'm following this right, on the bottom of your, I'm look, looking at like page, uh, twenty, the maintenance estimate, Patrick. Under one, one of the notes says the total cost equals the frequency divided by a hundred times quantity times cost, is that really a hundred divided by frequency? Is it the opposite?
I believe it would be the opposite of that, yeah, because you're looking at it.
Okay, the math check.
Hundred, hundred.
I did, the math checks out the other way, so.
Right, okay, okay.
So, so in the case of, of. A maintenance cost of a dollar for a road. A dollar per square yard. Right?
Right.
What is, what is that? What is the basis of that dollar?
So, I think it would be kind of looking at multiple different types of maintenance over the period, so. Probably looks at crack seal, milling overlay, uh, maybe some later maintenance fixes.
I just, I'm, I'm thinking about like Westridge.
Sure.
That was built in ninety-seven. And what we've done in Westridge. I know we've Cape sealed it twice and crack sealed it some. And I'm just curious, it becomes out to a dollar every four years.
Right, but I mean, you're on farms too, I mean, we've.
Well, any of them, any of them, what?
No, but what I'm saying is, here in farms, there's some streets that we've gone through in Milno, overlay twice already.
Right.
But, so that dollar. Per unit. Does that include replacement at some point in twenty years, thirty years, forty years, something like that?
Well, that's on, that's on the next.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Well, that, that, that's why I'm, I'm, that's why I was giving the West, the Westridge example, but only once I live there and I can remember what we've done, but. Like it says, replacement frequency, twenty-five years. We're going on twenty-seven, and we haven't replaced it yet.
Yeah, it's not close.
And it's not close, and we haven't even. Gone to the resurface part yet, we've covered it twice with Cape seal and maybe done some storm sewer work or some catch basic repair and. There's always some of that stuff, but. Um, we define that, interesting, so, do, Patrick, do you know why the? Uh, on, on the. One of these pages in here, the, the cost of the road. The, the cost of the curb went up from like fifty to one twenty-five. On the replacement cost? Fifty on the existing that you did, and it was, it's one twenty-five on the replacement. The road went down from one fifty to one hundred. I don't know if that's, we're assuming we could reuse something that's there. And the sidewalk stayed the same, it looked like to me, it went from thirty-five to thirty-five. And I'm just wondering what the logic was on.
Yeah.
One of them, cutting them. Cut by a third, the other going up by two and a half, and the other going up, staying the same.
I, I don't have a good answer for that. Okay, actually, uh, yeah, the only thing I could assume is that maybe there's. Some of the regular replacement costs and then. You know, I know we, we found that, uh. If it's more of a maintenance activity and curve definitely is a lot more expensive than the existing road is staying there versus if it's, you know, slip form. New site, that type of thing.
No problem. I, you know, re- relatively speaking, it's from a, from a board perspective, we're asking a big picture question, you know, the question, the, the purpose of doing this was. You know, does the, the development cost the city taxpayers, the existing city money, or does it? Benefit us all to have, add people? And add homes, right, so. There's a revenue side and there's a cost side, and obviously if the cost side. Force the revenue, this becomes a much more difficult argument for everybody, but if it's. The other way. Then it, it's an easier to grasp type. Exercise, so I, I think the understanding of the detail is important, and I realize this is the first draft that anybody's seen, so I just thought, wanted to. Throw some of those questions out there, I think it'd be great to clarify some of those assumptions, if we, if we could please. Dan?
On page nineteen, it says municipal well and wellhouse, um, does that include, were you thinking that we might possibly need. Leration and iron removal or are you, are you connecting?
I think we really, um, just use a general number, um, and Dan, uh, Waylon and I. I thought, we, we talked a little bit about, it's a good planning number, and I think part of that is the chemistry. Um, you know, logistics and where it's going to be located, power, that type of stuff, so I think that's a number that we, we definitely want to flesh out.
Okay, because that would probably change number twenty's number then, um, the municipal wellhouse.
For sure, yeah, yeah, depending where it was, thank you, Patrick.
So, like I, like I was saying, I, I, I view this as a first draft of whatever analysis we're trying to do, and we had a reason when this was asked. I don't know if it was Zach that asked a little bit, the first question, unfortunately, he's not here to, to follow up. Uh. I'm personally, personally treating this as an opportunity to get the questions out there and then let staff. OHM, whoever it is, Marie. Oh. You know, to, talk, if, if it needs to change or it needs to be refined, so we understand the numbers, I'd appreciate that.
One, one quick question.
Go ahead, Joe.
The. So, there's the table. Able, uh, three on maintenance costs comes out to forty-five thousand dollars annual liability. Table four comes up to one forty-six. And then table five comes out to one forty-six, seems like there's something. Not right with the math there on the last tape. Or one of the tables.
Yeah, there's either solid or be different, right?
Yep. Yeah, and I don't know, maybe, I don't know, yeah, it just doesn't look like it adds up pretty. Yep. I, I did do a quick add on table five, it looked like it worked out for the total number, so maybe it's on one of the others.
Marie?
Just something you said, Sean, made me think about this, I know that there were discussions and, and all along with this development about the density that's going to be allowed. And, you know, I'm stating the obvious, but, you know, if you have. More density, then these lower price point houses are going to bring more revenue, you know, I mean, obviously. Ten of them or twenty of them, so if you're looking at a lower price point, then density is how you make up the difference on that.
Right. Well, I've, I've. Most of council will recall, I've said this before, I, I'm not necessarily for sprawl. I like density, I think the redevelopment in town is important because. You get the, you create the, the revenue side of it, but we already have most of the investment in the existing infrastructure, you're not building as many roads and such. That being said. I still think this is a good opportunity for us. This is contiguous to what we have. And very similar because it's proposed, now there's a lot of details to go, but. I, I like the direction this is headed, I mean, this is a good thought, I mean, I don't, I don't think you've missed any categories here. Justin is what I'm. Like I said, I think you've got them all here. Or most of them here. Um, I don't know if street lighting is a significant cost to measure. Or put in there, because that would be a general fund item, I would think, right?
And that's.
You know, some of these offset the sewer, some of them go against the street, and then the rest is. Is general, and we might be. You know, I'm getting at. I think the more we can categorize that a little bit and, and paint that picture would be helpful. We're at six fifty, does council have other questions? Dave, any closing thoughts or questions for us? Or Tom, Tom, please? No hard ones, please.
I, I don't know, it's maybe a little bit of a hard one. Um, since it's been ten months to get to this point, I know. That, um, we've been studying the well, we have some concepts, we have some concept plans to revise and get it to the city, our, our modified copies. Um, and it sounded, Sean, like you mentioned, that this is a first draft of this report, and we're getting all the questions out on the table. Um, can I ask what the next steps look like from this, or what that looks like? Moving this forward with revising, um, the study, answering the questions that are here and so on, I mean. Assuming that the well, everything goes well with the well. What are the next steps with the financial report and the annexation request? What does council see this?
Well, I, I'm guessing that council's not going to want to take a, or try to make a decision on anything until after we get the full well. Report, is that fair? Does anybody disagree with that, or? No, I mean, I, I, I would think that sometime in the second quarter, Tom, after that's. Available, and I, I think that's plenty of time to revise this with the little bit that we've talked about, I would think we'd be making a decision or should make a decision. Personally, personally, I. I, I'm one of seven.
Sure. And.
But that's the way I'm going to lead us, I'm going to lead us towards that question, because I think, I, I mean, this has been on the table for a couple of years. I, I don't know. I don't know, if we're, if we're looking for more information, it's up to us to generate it and to, to, to tell you. And I, I don't know what, I don't know what that is at this point.
If I may, that was going to be my follow-up to that, is, is there additional information outside of what we've been talking about here tonight? That, um, would be. That, um, would be required that we think of right now that we should be providing?
If, if we can think of it, we'll, we'll, we'll tell you. You know, Justin, let me ask you a question. How, how long do you think working with OHM, it would take you to bring?
To, to, to revise, based on what we discussed, and that shouldn't take long.
I mean, could we like the first meeting in December?
Should be fine.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
Was that reasonable?
I got, I got a thumbs, thumbs up from Patrick, so.
You know, maybe we could do another quick workshop or something in December. Hopefully, we can have Zach and, um, you know, I hear, anticipating they will be.
I just have one question. The, the seventy-six lots layout looks closest to Dexter Crossing. Are the lot sizes and projections for the homes similar? Is, is it intended to be similar to an extension, essentially, extension of Dexter Crossing?
Yes, with the lot sizing, we tried to keep consistent with Dexter Crossing, um, and even where we were adjacent. So Dexter Crossing had some larger lots around the edge.
You're right.
Tried to be a little larger around the edge and have, uh, smaller, narrower lots towards the middle version.
Got it, understand. Thank you.
I'll say this one time, and again, that's not what we have as a goal to.
Content.
Thank you, boss, and go to the time. Refer to your answer plan.
Thank you.
I, which page did that on? Which page did that on, please?
Oh, the, the, there's, um, Jamie, there were three maps, I think, in the beginning. Uh, page seven has one version.
Mm-hmm.
Page eight has another concept.
Mm-hmm.
And page nine, I think, is the most, is the one that has the hundred and thirteen units if I'm following it correctly. Tom, is that right? Pissed upon you? So the, the third, page nine and thirty-one, I believe, was the, was the one that filled the one picture. They all have a similar feel to how where the driver, you know, drives, come in at two points and flow around, but it's.
Right. Thank you. I, I'm not gonna be on council when council is making this decision, so my opinion of this is what it is. Uh,
All questions.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I guess I would not support density without connectivity like that at the back of the neighborhood. I'll be curious to see how the numbers shake out, what happens with the wall. Density without connectivity. But typically, in these types of developments, you see the denser units and the denser housing types in the front. And this is putting it in the back.
Michelle. Oh, oh, Michelle, go ahead. Yeah, Michelle?
So in answering Tom Culvert's next step question, um, and understanding that Justin and OHM are going to revise the numbers, um, remember you have your nine criteria spelled out in the master plan. Once we have the definitive information regarding the well, the, all of those criteria, staff would, um, uh, update and then present to you, um, at a council meeting for you to, uh, potentially take action on the requested annexation. So we're, we're in the home stretch, so to speak.
Thank you. Okay, I've got seven, well, four minutes to seven, three minutes if I look at that clock. Um, are there any other questions or comments anyone wanna make? I'm gonna like to adjourn the meeting, the workshop, so that we can, um, well, hold on, I wanna adjourn. I have to call non-arranged participation first. Um, Dave, did we get all of your questions or comments out? Okay. Yes. Please come to the mic, sir, again.
Our retail three, five, three, nine, eleven city of Dexter. Are the utilities extending through Dexter Crossing and is the stub prepared to take that volume, are they in place, or will we have to upgrade? Is there even stubs there? Is Joe bone or put in it?
There, there are still stubs there.
Except the capacity that's proposed.
Is Patrick still here? Patrick, do the, the existing utilities that are proposed to be connected to have the capacity to take the hundred and thirteen or the seventy-six?
Um, they should, I think they ran a water model, um, straight. Um, the bigger question would be the wide side of things, so.
Well, I'm worried about suicide and test all the, uh, month. We can see about a third.
From sewer, which you can do.
Yeah, there's, there's.
Well, that, that does have the capacity.
Yeah, the.
And it's going to connect through the two stubs off of Wellington, is that correct?
Correct. That's what's proposed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't want to see the, oh, true.
Is there any other non-arranged? Any other non-arranged participation this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you all for attending the workshop. We'll, uh, give council five minutes to use restroom or whatever, and then we'll start the regular meeting at, uh,